I would like to call the order the October 21st Academic Achievement Committee Meeting of the School Year 2425. Good evening and welcome to the October 21st Academic Achievement Committee Meeting. I am Mrs. Madeline Lasalle Fraser, Chair of this committee and the District 8 Representative for the Prince George's County Board of Education. If everyone would please take a moment to introduce yourselves, starting with committee members, then the PGCPS Administration, staff, and the Board Office staff. Thank you everyone for being here today.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jomolje Jongo. I'm the 44th student member of the Board and Vice Chair of the Academic Achievement Committee.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shola Adams Stafford. I'm the District 4 Representative. And I'm excited to be here this evening. Thank you so much.
Dr. Miller.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. Zippora Miller. I'm the District 5 School Board Member and a member of the Academic Achievement Committee.
Thank you.
All right, I guess I'll let Dr. White go.
Hi, I'm Judy White, Chief Academic Officer.
Hello, I am Lorenzo Russell. I'm Mr. Lorenzo Russell, the new Associate Superintendent for Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement.
How are you?
Good evening, everyone. I work with Mr. Russell. My name is Leona Smith, and I'm the Innovation Officer for Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Rosa Lopez, and I'm the Board of Education Administrative Support.
Good evening, Revel D. Fitzpatrick, H.I.P.H.I.S., and I'm the Director for the Prince George's County Board of Education. Thank you for all of you all who will join in watching this recording.
Thank you for that. As we know, this committee will meet virtually once a month on Mondays at 5:30 PM. Our topics for each month will be posted on board docs prior to the meeting date. The public is also welcome to register prior to our meeting and present their testimony on agenda items, live, written, or through a pre-recorded video. For those of you who are not able to observe now, the meeting is being recorded and will be available on the PGCPS YouTube channel and the board docs for later viewing. Ms. Lopez, could you please call the roll?
Mrs. Adam Stafford?
Here.
Mr. Jongo?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Present.
Mrs. Fraser?
Present.
We have four in the affirmative? I'm sorry, four present and zero absent.
Thank you. So we have four in the affirmative. That means that we have quorum. Thank you. We're going to move forward to Agenda Point 1.3, which is the adoption of the meeting agenda. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the October 21st, 2024 meeting agenda. There being no objections, the meeting agenda is adopted. Moving right along, we'll go on to 1.4, which is the approval of the committee meeting minutes. If there are no corrections, the committee shall approve the September 16, 2024 meeting minutes as distributed. There being no objections, the meeting minutes are approved. There are no registered public comments speakers this evening, so we will move along from 2.0 to 3.0, which is a discussion item, and it will be led by administration. I will now yield to Dr. Judith White, Chief Academic Officer, and introduce Agenda 3.1, Comprehensive Support and Improvement CSI Schools.
Hello, everyone. I bring you greetings on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Rashine Davis, who runs our School Leadership and Support Team. Tonight, her team is here with us to talk about our CSI schools. Remember this school year, we're looking at problems of practice, and then we are executing in the field and then bringing back what has worked, where we have seen growth challenges, areas that we can grow from. So this evening, I know that you, many of you have heard about CSI schools and the different supports, and so they're coming tonight to talk about norming their practice and to discuss CSI schools in general and to share with us a practice that they're going to focus on in our CSI schools this year. So with that, I turn it over to Mr. Russell and his colleague, Ms. Smith.
All right, good evening. I'm very delighted to be here and to share with you. I actually think I've met everyone that's on the screen, so some familiar faces, and again, glad to have my colleague, to join us. We wanted to just bring greetings from our office because our office is a new office. I started in April, but we are, you know, transitioning as we are turning into the Office of Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement, where our office will be supporting the comprehensive support and improvement schools in Prince George's County Public Schools. Next slide. All right, so, I'm sorry, I want to just make sure I'm looking at it. As we consider the needs of our schools in improvement status, particularly our CSI schools, we must pause and ask, what are we going to intentionally do to support them? Research demonstrates that creating real growth requires innovation. This means finding new ways to address challenges and improve student outcomes. Schools cannot rely solely on replicating the same models or cutting costs. They must add value by doing things differently and better. This requires a transformation in how we operate, how we collaborate, and how we lead. Effective transformation is driven by leadership at all points, with active involvement from everyone to ensure that change is consistent and aligned across the entire organization. So on the screen, you'll see the words innovation, strategy, transformation, and leadership. And we want, we really are asking our departments, but also as our leaders, what are we going to intentionally do that's going to support our CSI schools? Next slide. We are also charged with ensuring that all students acquire the attributes and skills they need to drive, to thrive in a dynamic, complex, global community. And so, um, this is a little, so. If you take a look, for those of you who have seen the student learning profile, you notice that we have all of those as global citizen, communicator, critical thinking, creator and innovator, and goal-directed learners. This is all the work that's coming out of the T26, and these are the goals that we have for all of our students. So we wanted to just make sure that we keep that at the center of the focus with our work with CSI schools. Next slide. We are fortunate to have a robust set of resources, various departments and support for all of our schools across many of our offices and departments. These offices work to assist our schools with improvement through a variety of capacities, from the school performance plan creations, planning and monitoring, professional learning, community partnerships, and more. However, given our large size and the vast needs of our students post the pandemic, our efforts have pockets of silos and our student data indicates a need for additional support and innovation. Next slide. The goal of our Office of Transformation Leadership and Continuous Improvement is to deepen the multifaceted support while streamlining the work of connecting schools to resources, infusing innovative practices and monitoring impact to answer the question, what will we do differently? So if you notice on the right-hand side, you'll see how we're trying to make connections, collaboration, innovation, and strategies that align and that streamline around professional development. But then, more importantly, we want advocacy. We want to really make sure that our principals, our teachers, and our students are actually benefiting from that that we're trying to do that's new and innovative. Next slide. So our desired state, given our desired state, we have begun to draft up our vision. As I mentioned, we are a new office, and so there's some norming and storming that we're doing as we, as I develop a team, our vision, our mission, and our theory of action that will help drive the work that is within our office. So I wanted to just go ahead and have a, take a moment to really talk about our vision. So the vision is to pioneer transformative practices, foster innovative leadership, and drive continuous improvement in schools, inspiring a future where every learner thrives. Our goal is to make sure that not only those things happen at the central office level, but it actually trickles down to the school level, to the teacher level, as well as to the students. Our mission is, we are committed to catalyzing positive change in our schools by empowering the leaders, nurturing innovation, and cultivating a culture of continuous improvement. It's been a lot of work that has been done as we're late, and I'll talk more about the partnerships that we have, but I want to make sure that we actually create the culture for continuous improvement. Our theory of action is through strategic partnerships, research-driven initiatives, and collaborative effort, we will equip every student, every educator, and leader with the skills, knowledge, and opportunities to excel in our ever-evolving world. Next slide. All right, so I wanted to kind of talk about some initial CSI work that we've actually started, and again, you'll see the titles, Strategy, Leadership, and Innovation. So we started back, our first opportunity was to work with our our departmental cross-functional teams back, I believe, in June, where we were beginning to think about what does the work look like for supporting our CSI schools. And we began that work initially on the onset of me starting, and we are going to continue to do that. But from there, we had the Three-Day Institute, and we made, we collaborated with the University of Maryland, and we focused on the improvement of improvement science and high-leverage strategies. So the goal was to bring school leaders and bring school teams so that they can actually come together. So working with monitoring and accountability, the academics team partnering with UMD and the area office, some initial work was launched to support the goal of transforming their practices to impact student achievement. Each CSI, ATS I schools participated in this training, and the purpose was to go deep around the learning around improvement science and connecting to those strategies that ultimately was connected to also the school performance plan. As we shared when we started, building the capacity of the leaders is a critical piece of this puzzle. Our CSI principals were provided with coaching opportunities from experience principal consultants to support the design and implementation of their school performance plan. We have added on as related to the leadership component, launching new monthly systemic professional learning opportunities for principals. The goal behind that is to really make sure the principals are receiving the training that they need to then, again, take it back to their school levels. And then we also wanted to make sure that because many of our schools, many of our CSI schools are also community schools, we wanted to make sure that they were engaged and involved in this planning so that their strategies will come alive as well, because we know that all community schools also need, have to complete a plan. We wanted there to be some alignment in the work that is being done with them. Finally, we know that we must consider what we need to do differently and where innovation can support growth. We've launched a cross-departmental steering committee to break down the silos of support and streamline our efforts across the district. Coaching professional development has become a focus of all principals' learning this year to support leaders and building their capacity of their teachers in their buildings. We have also initiated new professional learning for our math teachers at all CSI schools to build their content knowledge in math and deepen their capacity to make decisions on instructional next steps for students with our OGAAP series, which we will share in the presentation in one second. Next slide. All right, I wanted to kind of just talk about our focus for our CSI schools this year because it's connected to not only the current student data, but it also aligns with our T26 and our Maryland Blueprint. So I wanted to specifically talk about how for this school year, we're starting small, and we're trying to improve math. I put ELA on there because we really wanted to not, not lose sight of the work that also needs to be done with ELA. But our focus is on math and is connected to our outcome goals of educational excellence. Our next one is around improving climate and culture, and that is connected and aligned to our outcome goal of mental health and wellness. We know that there is a need to improve our attendance, just connected to educational excellence and mental health as well. Improving observation, feedback, and coaching. All of our principals and assistant principals are engaged in being able to actually not only observe, but give feedback and coaching. So we're spending an extensive amount of time working with our leaders to ensure that our principals and our teachers have an opportunity to be able to practice this and get them to give feedback about what's happening in the classroom, what's happening in their common planning time, what's happening with the data. We really want this to be a thing that everybody is doing. And then our last, as part of our focus, is around just improving graduation rate. We're just connected and aligned to educational excellence. I wanted to just take a moment before we go to the next slide to just kind of talk about the why as it relates to our math data. And so when it comes to the data from 2023 to 24, we saw that there were small incremental increases from 2023 for grades third through fifth in algebra. The state remained pretty flat over, in terms of the growth. Our math proficiency combined was 10.8%. So in this state, we are the third lowest. Our grade six to eight math is one thing that is affecting our overall math proficiency rate as they had very little improvements. So although all grade levels are at 21% or lower. Our Hispanic subgroup went down in proficiency across all grade levels except math in eighth grade. So Black subgroups went up in math, in grade seventh and eighth, and in algebra. Another factor is the population that has some growth is where our students with disability, with disabilities went up 5%. Economic disadvantaged students went up 10%, which is about 3,128 students. Multilingual students' data went up by 7.2%, which is about 1,241 students. Math overall report card data is not ready yet, and so once we get that information, we'll be able to provide an update as relate to the proficiency data. I thought it was important to share that before we go into this next slide as it relates to what we're doing with OGAAP. So what is OGAAP? So OGAAP is our, is the Ongoing Assessment Project. It is a formative assessment system based upon learning progressions and mathematics. And if you notice there, those are the three particular areas that we're, four particular areas that we're working on as related to the grade specifics there. I'll give you guys a moment to take a look at that. So we started this this summer. So 86 teachers from CSI schools participated in a four-day professional development to build teacher knowledge about mathematics, education research, and how students learn mathematical concepts. 21 CSI principals and 35 central office math leaders received professional development to support this implementation. We're very excited about it because it's new, and it actually is one of the strategies that was a part of the Maryland Blueprint, if my memory serves me correctly. All participants will receive ongoing professional development and coaching throughout the year. 20 of our 24 20 of our 24 CSI schools are designated, connected to subgroup performance with students with disabilities, and five schools were based upon multilingual learners, hence why I mentioned the data prior to this slide. So our next steps, we're very excited about being able to add additional cohorts of teachers so that they can receive the training in the professional development. And then we're going to do, continue to do some additional work with our two most subgroup areas. So working with the Office of Special Ed as well as ML to help get them involved and engaged so that we can continue to support the schools. Next slide. So work in progress. We are excited about the work that this office has begun, and we are, and where we're headed. We also recognize that this is work in progress, and there is still a lot of work to be done as we continue to consider the needs for innovation, strategy, and leadership to be able to transform our schools, and most importantly, we want to transform things so that we can have better student outcomes. So in terms of working, the progress, we want to continue to build capacity of our leaders, being able to work with our cross-functional teams to really be able to answer the question, what are we intentionally doing or offering that is different for our CSI ATS schools, which is a part of the innovation? How are we leveraging opportunities with our community and business partners? So again, leaning into our community schools, our community organizations, and our partners to be able to strengthen some of the work that we're doing. How are we retaining our students? So we want to be able to look at our data to see what is actually happening with our students, and if we have students that are leaving and talking with families, so being able to work with also different offices with our family and community engagement office to figure out what is actually happening. So we may be doing some work with that office as well to be able to figure out what do we need to do so that we can maintain and keep our students and then offer them something that's, that's causing them not to leave the district. How are we keeping families engaged in our work, which is a part of the strategy as well? And how are we leveraging the spaces to be able to create more opportunities for student agency? We really need, we feel like this is important to really be able to hear from our students and create the spaces for them to be able to tell us what it is about school that they like, they do not like, and what they would like to see different. And then lastly, it's the shifting of the mindsets to think outside the box. We learned, of course, through the pandemic that we, we had an opportunity to do things differently. So we wanted to really expand upon that opportunity to be able to do so. And I think that is, brings me to the last slide, which is questions.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I'm going to open it up for the floor for discussion now. Do we have questions? I see Board Member Adam Stafford and then Dr. Zippora Miller. Member Adam Stafford, are you there? Okay, we'll come back to you.
Well, sorry, I'm here. I was, thought I was unmuted. Sorry about that. Yes, thank you so much for this presentation, and I was happy to see that you all are doing some content-based professional development, specifically around math. I guess I have a couple of questions just specifically around what the coaching looks like. So what will the coaching look like at the CSI schools? And what will teachers be expected to develop? So for example, you know, by the end of the program, are they going to develop lesson plans? Are we tracking and monitoring their perception of their ability to teach common core math? Do they feel more confident in teaching it after going through this training? Additionally, you know, I don't see much mention here of just generally, just literacy. You know, specifically, you know, when we're talking about math, hold on one second. No. You know, are we leveraging some of the existing math coaches that we have? So maybe if you could just talk a bit more about what the professional development will look like? And sort of how we're measuring the effectiveness of that?
Okay, great. I'm going to actually allow my colleague, Ms. Smith, to share that.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Happy to answer this. So I'll share a little bit about the model. So the professional development focuses on teachers' ability to look at something called math progressions, which is the progression in which the brain learns math. So they spend time digging into that content, and then they learn how to give exit tickets to see where a student might be on the progression to make this decision on the next step. So it's a lot about looking at student work, and it's curriculum agnostic, so it doesn't have to interrupt any curriculum we're using. And it doesn't connect necessarily to the standards. It's the teacher's ability to look at a student's piece of work and decide what's instructionally next for this student if they're not currently on grade level. So that's the supportive part of it. That's what they're going to learn differently throughout this year. And so what the coaching looks like is our facilitators from OGAAP come back three times a year, and they stay a whole week with us. They were just here in September, and we went to 12 schools, but everyone who participated and the professional development was invited. So even if they didn't come to your school, we matched them up with like schools geographically and also similar in demographics, and they all participated together in a math common planning time with our facilitators. So every math teacher brought student work with them that they'd been trying out, like an exit ticket, some sort of informal assessment, and they practiced sorting it. What would this student need based off the learning progressions? And so it's real-time, what we call hip-to-hip, somebody right next to you helping you think about what's the next step. Our math coaches, our central math coaches were also involved in the professional development. And so part of also how we plan to support this is in between those coaching visits from the professional developers, our team and our office will go out to do school visits, and we plan to collaborate and invite along with us our colleagues from the Title I Office, our colleagues from the math office, everyone who supports schools so that we're all speaking the same language and watching how our teachers are growing and their ability to look at student work and make instructional decisions, particularly for students who are not yet on grade level or accessing grade level standards. I hope that helps answer your question.
I guess if I could just say, I mean, I think, you know, having the three touchpoints a year, that's, that's great, but I do think that teachers need a more, you know, consistent connection and, you know, support on these, these topics. And so, you know, is there a way for the math coaches to not just observe how the teachers are implementing the exit tickets, but to actually be with them and do preemptive planning with them like during their common planning time, so that we can see a shorter turnaround cycle of if this is working or not?
So I'll speak to that simply because this is, this initiative is being led out of the School Leadership Office, and while we partner, remember that our math coaches, of which we only have in middle and high school, you only have four each. So we support the entire district. So what I will say around OGAAP is my team also went to the training. My team was already aware of OGAAP because we already have it in the curriculum built out. So there are ways that they get supported through their lesson plans also, already being built, because when we provide as a part of our curriculum information where students are answering and you allow them to say, if this is what they gave as the answer of this, they prompt them through that OGAAP process. So we're building alongside to make sure that they have those supports around the curriculum. They're being intentional, and Board Member Adam Stafford, you're asking really good things because you understand this from an instructional perspective. This is one of the many things that we're doing. So know that with CSI, one of the things that we had to identify with this state in terms of funds is that whole thing around what's, what's different, right? What are we doing different than we doing with every other school? And so one of the things that we wanted to do as a touchpoint, so they will still get supported in general around mathematics, but one of the things that this organization that we're using is, is supporting through this one thing that's different, which is OGAAP. And so that's why we said they'll bring them in, they'll keep talking to them, but know that we have connections right in the curriculum. I just didn't want you to lose sight on the number of coaches we have, and they're supporting every other school in the district.
Thank you. That's helpful context.
No problem. And you know, one of the things I'll say is, you know, is, as we come through this, and then just, and I just want to bring clarity because I know Board Member Adam Stafford, I think you were away from us last month having your bundle of joy. And so what you did possibly miss was the framing that we're And so what you did possibly miss was the framing that we're doing now is um in September, October, November, we're presenting a problem of practice. And I think you and I talked about this when you were leading um.
Oh, yes, yes. That's helpful for me to understand.
I apologize for just stepping back a second and giving context. And so under Zippor's leadership, we came up with this model. So what the model is, is what we present in in September as a problem of practice. We go out and actually work on it and then we come back. That team will come back in January. They'll bring school members. They'll bring principals or teachers, whatever is relevant to what they presented. So that was special education and equity. Now in October, we're doing the CSI school. So in February, this team will bring back some colleagues from schools to say how OGAAP actually worked. What they felt about the professional development. And then next month, I want to say it's um ELD and how we're supporting our ELD and they'll come back in March. Then in April, in in December and April, we'll do um data, review of data, whatever data we have at that point. And then in May, we'll come back and talk about what were the challenges based on what you all heard said, what we've heard and shared? What are challenges and how can we address it and how do we make it better? So this is a problem of practice. They'll come back in February and they'll share how OGAAP hit schools.
Well, that's fantastic. I remember us talking about this years ago. So this is great. Um, thank you so much for clarity.
No problem. Thank you for allowing me to in interject and share that context.
Thank you, Dr. White. Dr. Miller?
Hi, thank you so much. I and again, thank you for this presentation and I appreciate you adding this um segment to um. The trajectory of coming in, looking at the practice and then after actually looking at the impact it's having on the school level. So last, I think it was last, not last year. I know it was last year when we looked at the budget. I remember one of my questions was, okay, so we're adding a transformation office. What is different, right? So that that's really where my framework is coming from. So when you talked about improvement science and I said, I think we have, we do improvement science throughout the school district. And so then uh, thank you, um, Dr. White, as you honed into the OGAAP. So I see that that is the practice that I'm hearing that is different at the school. Because the beauty of last year is we were able to see math practices in elementary, in middle and in high school. I and what would, what were the, you know, strengths that they were having, the impact it was having at the school level? And then we also looked at the data. So I knew about the coaches. And so you, uh, Dr. White, you helped in explaining how these coaches were in addition to. So I guess my question would be around transformation. So when you come to a CSI school, in my head, I'm thinking this is probably a school which could be Title One. MSD is looking at it. So they have all of these initiatives that are ha- that have to happen in the school. So then you add transformation. So what are you saying? I'm gonna pull back on this or this is gonna enhance this practice to ensure that it's in alignment and the teacher teachers don't feel. Or the principal doesn't feel that they're being pulled in so many different um. So many different we- ways, because I'm all in for transformation. I I really think that sometimes we need to do something different. But when we do something different, I wanted to, I I want to just understand how is it ensuring that it's aligning? And then two, when you choose the practice, how how are you sure that this is a practice that we've seen work somewhere else? Or this is what we're trying because we've seen research has proven that it could work in this setting?
Yeah, I think that we're coming off of a very important meeting that we just actually had with um with MS um MSD with the convening. And we were pretty much having that same conversation because it seems as though there were so many different plans. And so we wanted to make sure that what we're really trying to do is bring the coherence so that principals and their teams don't feel like they have so many things. But if there's the one, two or three things that they're actually focused on and is it the right thing to make sure that we actually get into better results? So we look, we've pretty much like taken the scale back to look at different programs that they have of best practices as relate. They may, so a school may have been using a particular program to help uh supplement a a curriculum. We're actually saying, how about maybe not use that anymore and do something different to get better, better results? And so I'm not sure if Leona or wanna add on to that.
Sure. Uh, one thing I would add on is where, like, where does that kind of conversation happen, right? So it happens in a couple places, a little more formally in those monthly. So what's new this year are these monthly meetings in which we bring our CSI principals together. They've not engaged in that way together. So creating sort of a professional learning community for them to think through what you just talked about as a leader. How do I strategize, making sure they understand um their current needs? Um, making sure they understand some of the things we've already planned ahead is data literacy for themselves and their staff. Um, prioritizing which strategies, like you said, are research based and match the data that they said that their students need and sharing with each other. So that's one of the the main ways we're gonna do sort of what you just asked about is helping them bring it together, the coherence part. And helping them think through what maybe can be taken off their plate. Um, also, in addition, uh, for all of our leaders and our monthly um sys- systemic school leaders, the coaching piece is also a piece to help transform. To help those reflective conversations to say, if this is not working in your classroom, let's talk about something that is. Those would be two pieces that I would add in is where some of that transformation occurs is with the coaching and the professional learning with our principals. And helping them connect to other principals who are just like them so they don't feel isolated and alone in this work.
The other thing I would just add is just for this team to know is that OGAAP is being sponsored by MSD. So it's not something that was just out there and they grabbed. Also, just to note, everything and everybody that touches curriculum must come through academics. Like they are not allowed to just any office to pick something and implement in schools they should not be without consultation from the Division of Academics. Because we are the content. However, OGAAP is supported by MSD. It is one of the research models that is being pushed by MSD, so much so that MSD also had additional trainings. And I think Mr. Russell should talked about that so that more teachers will have an opportunity to participate. It's just that while we don't mind other teachers, because it it's great when you think about progressions and we've had progressions. This is really explicit around uh progressions, really explicit around what teachers are learning is how do you take those lesson plans? How do you put work in front of students? You get student work back and then you're able to batch student work to understand where they fall. So that you can group students so that you can see, oh, you you know this, but you you're this close of being able to move up the progression because you can't do this. And the more that they're able to do that, the more they're able to look at student work, batch students and then move students individually. And so it's just being real targeted to the CSI schools to try that one next step different.
Can I ask a follow up to?
You may. Well, you, can you ask it in the second round?
That's fine.
Okay. Uh. Vice Chair Dongo, can I uh transfer chair for a little bit so I could ask my question? Thank you. My question, well, first of all, thank you. Thank you for the information. Um. I'm very interested in two things. First of all, I think that it would behoove us if we provided a little bit of history to our parents that are listening and to. People that are not aware of what we're talking about. We we use a lot of um. Names that perhaps may not be familiar with for our parents. Um, so I would love for a little history, especially as it relates to the blueprint. Um, and then the other piece that I would love to hear a little bit more about, you talked about student um um agency and voice. How are we incorporating that? And can you talk a little bit about how we're looking at um, I mean incorporating and measuring um that component? Thank you.
So I can't, I'm gonna yield to uh Dr. White for that blueprint part and then I'll talk about the student agency if you don't mind.
So I don't think she meant blueprint per se. I think what she's asking is how CSI schools formed. What is, what what designates um a school to have a CSI designation? What does that mean from the state? Maybe how long they're in that status? Um, and so as a result, a little bit about that they have to do a plan, that kind of thing. I think that's what she's referring to.
Got it. Okay. Well, then in that case, Miss Smith, take it over.
Well, I'm happy to um share to the best of my knowledge and actually, Mr. Russell mentioned that recently we just came off of a meeting with MSD for them to further clarify. So as you know, as part of our report card system, schools um get points for a variety of things, attendance, academic achievement, improvement, graduation rate. And so when MSD looks at all of that and totals that, they take a look at a couple of criteria. So our CSI schools are what we call our most significantly needy schools. So for elementary and middle, um, they take a look at the schools that are at the lowest five percent across the state that are Title One like them. And so if you're in that lowest five percent, that's the first marker. The other piece they look at is your different subgroup data. And so our subgroups are different populations or demographics of students, our students with disabilities, um, our students who are fortunate to speak many languages, our multilingual students. Um, so there's various subgroups they also look at and there are annual targets that are over the next few years that they want those those subgroups to be meeting. So if I'm a school and unfortunately I'm in that lowest five percent when they rank us. And also um my subgroups are not meeting targets, I would have been identified as a CSI school. If I'm a high school, they were looking specifically at graduation rate right now. And so our three high schools that are CSI are they, they have not met the benchmark of sixty six point seven percent graduating all their students. So we have three schools that are CSI for graduation rate and then our middle and elementary school, many of that, well, all of them are part of the five percent. As well as some of them, it might be their students with disabilities and perhaps Hispanic students. They, it's, it depends on the school's demographics. So they were identified, I want to say almost a a year and a half ago. It's like a three year process. So there was been two iterations. The state is also getting more clarity on their end about this process as it relates to the federal law of ESA. That's how we receive accreditation and all those pieces. And so there was one iteration and they revamped it and we're sort of in that second iteration. And that's where we came up with our twenty one schools that are now CSI's. So the state of Maryland tells us that these are your your schools based off of this particular performance. And then we work with them and there's many, many offices that Mr. Russell shared on that screen that have done great work with around plan creation and professional development. And then also MSD comes in from time to time and monitors that work. Does that give some context?
Yes, it does. I think it's important because I I often get questions from parents that are not understanding um a lot of different terms that we use. Um, also, can you share, is there a place where parents can go to look for that information?
So there are two places and Mr. Russell mentioned this. So our state report card by school is updated annually. And so it is not yet up yet. It's, it was supposed to be up recently and so we're waiting for them um to share that. So parents can always go to the state of Maryland Education's um website and look at your school. And then you can look at the report card and you can see the areas in which your school is thriving and where there's some opportunities for growth. I don't believe we have a specific list on our site, but it does exist also on the MSD website of the schools that have been designated as comprehensive um support schools. Or additional targeted support. So that that list does exist.
Thank you so.
I want to be, I want to go ahead and answer the 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 question around um student agency. So the student agency is the idea that students should be actively involved in their learning, um, being able to make choices and being able to set goals. And uh, we really just wanted to, we thought it was important that if it hasn't happened in the past, that we create the space for students to actually be able to advocate for themselves. So not like the traditional educational model where students were actually passive in the learning that's taking place and receiving information. But creating the space for them to be able to develop self efficacy themselves, be able to build their confidence, gain an understanding of the strengths uh and how they're learning. Uh, we wanted them to play a major role into like the curriculum, being able to choo- to choose different courses as related to the models of their schools. So really trying to find a way to create a protocol so that these CSI schools, when they walk away, they can say, oh, someone never asked me, what did I think about my teachers? What did I think about the the content or the subjects that they're actually or engaging or the the types of options? So on one of the slides earlier, I talked about some of our students leaving. We need to find out why they're leaving and the way you do that is to be able to ask questions and create. Um, so we'll be able to use uh me, Jamal, to be able to help us to figure out how this can actually uh work around talking to our students.
Thank you so much. That's so important. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so second round. Dr. Miller, right away.
Yeah, because I didn't want to forget my backup question. So as we think about the coaching and thank you so much. As we think about the coaching and we know coaching is one of those things where it's cyclical and you have gradual change. So you have the coaches and if my understanding was they come in three times a year, correct? So they're coming in three times a year and coaching the teachers. Te- the the goal is for them to reflect on their current practice and then the coaches leave, right? But the teachers are implementing whatever it was that the coaches had worked with them on. So my question is, who is actually helping monitor that whatever happened in the coaching session is actually being implemented? And then if they have questions as during that period before they come back again, that they someone who can they can, they can depend on. So I think that's part A. Then part B is what data are you collecting in order to ensure that, you know, they're implementing with fidelity? Or maybe not, and it's okay if they're not, because if they, if they're not, then you can course correct and that's the whole goal of the growth and the coaching. So I think I'm grappling with what is the ongoing, when I hear coaching, I hear ongoing. But when they're coming three times a year, in my mind, you're coached, but there's no ongoing. Like, we we're having this conversation back and forth as we're trying to change practice. So that was eh, part A. Part B then is with the principal. How are we ensuring that the principal is well equipped to walk into the classroom and understand? Teacher A's coaching was on blank. And so when I am working with teacher A, this is not evaluative. I'm just, how do I ensure that I am also appropriately giving them feedback? So that they can continue their practice. So two part question, sorry.
So I'll take a stab at a little bit of it and then I'll pass it on to Leona. I think um because the answers kind of go um together. As related to, I talked about the structure of our monthly meetings. So the the re- we're really trying to get principals um to to get, one, the knowledge themselves so that they can then be able to go back. With the consistency, there's an expectation that this is actually happening during their um common plant, planning time to be able to work with the the teachers. And we're actually going to find other ways to be able to also bring them them in. But that, that's one of the reasons why we chose to go deeper so that principals who are not necessarily comfortable with with being able to to coach. That they're actually getting the the, uh, we're building their capacity to be able to do some of the coaching as well.
I would, uh, thank you, Mr. Russell. What I'll add to that, uh, apologize if I didn't make this clearer earlier. So some of our participants were also math leaders and coaches in their building. So trying to, um, when it was, when it was, uh, uh, when the person was available, we had quite a few uh math teacher leaders or um ILTLs. I'm I'm probably saying that incorrectly. They attended and also remember that the principals attended. And the other piece that I didn't share, um, in addition to this, is that when the coaches come back to work with the teachers, they also do a leadership coach day. So it's built in the multiple times they come, they spend four days in schools and then they spend a day with leaders. So that's another place also to your point to continue to build the capacity of our leaders to be the ones to give that feedback as well. Um, and then inter- in between intermittently is where our team in partnership with the area team and other departments. We'll be going out to school visits to have those coaching conversations, follow up with our principals and our math coaches. The, what you asked about the monitoring piece, so we are shifting people's practice and mindset, which is a little different to monitor than say, does every student have number sense, right? That's a little bit. So what that looks like is we are in the um process of creating, look for documents around that common planning time. What should the conversation be shifting to so that we can see the impact of um teacher's ability to make those instructional decisions? And then ultimately, it should impact student achievement.
So the, maybe I misunderstood. So this classroom teacher is receiving the coaching or is it the teacher leader who's receiving?
All three.
Or both?
All three, classroom teacher, teacher leader and principal.
So every mathematics teacher in a, in a CSI school is receiving coaching from the OGAAP?
If they attended the training. So that was the first piece of it and that's why we're adding on additional cohorts. Um, we've already received quite a bit of inquiry from, um, teachers are the best way to advertise things. And so the teachers who came in the summer, they gave up their summertime, they went back and told their colleagues, they're sharing their resources. And then after that first round of coaching, we've already had, we've gotten quite a bit of inquiry around, I want to send more teachers or I have a few more teachers that want to attend. So we're, that's why we're launching that second set of um additional training to grow the professional learning community around this.
And how many CSI schools do you have?
Twenty one.
Twenty one.
Thank you. Anyone else for round two? Any last pieces of nuggets of information that you want to share with us before we move to the next agenda item? Or are we good? Let me take the temperature of the, of the screen.
I was just curious. Sorry. Last question. And I lost my train of thought. The first, the CSI schools, because they're under the
Destination.
Well, the state has not oversight, but they're really looking at what they're doing, right? Can we require that they have, if this is the area that we want them to grow? I guess I'm curious, can we require, because it seems like some came during the summer and I know we can't make teachers come in during the summer, but can we put a, a, I don't know if there's a mechanism in place to require them to be able to engage in that professional learning. And I say that also, and I'm, I'm going to sound like I'm talking with a fourth, fourth town because I also know there's a teacher shortage. So if you do it during the school day, you got to get substitute teachers. And so I, I'm just grappling with what is it that we can do to ensure that this consistency in them receiving that training? So each student is receiving a skilled teacher in that OGAAP.
Yeah. So I think that what you said, our planning is probably going to be critical because we did start in the summer and in some cases we either had folks that had already had plans. Then we also just didn't have some staff members that was actually staff. So I think we're, we're better positioned now to be able to incorporate those individuals that could not attend. And then when we think about future planning, we can maybe try to figure out a way to do it within the contractual time. So we don't run, run up against folks who said that they are not available over the summer. So the goal is to do exactly what Miss Smith talked about, how we are letting the teachers really tell the story because we actually had some, when we did a survey, we got feedback from the, the participants. They were, the comment and the feedback was overwhelming to the point where many of the teachers that couldn't come, they're now excited about it, just as the principals also was kind of like, oh wow, I wish I had my three teachers who I just hired attend. So we're just trying to be a little bit more proactive and to get any information out there so that there is consistency and we actually get more people trained.
Thank you for that. Work in progress, right? Thank you so much. Okay, moving right along. We're moving into 4.1 and 4.2. Follow-up some next steps. Any follow-ups from tonight's meetings will be posted in board docs. I would like to thank the public, my colleagues, PGCPS administration staff, board office staff for joining us tonight. There being no further business, the time is now. Let's see what time is 6:26 on October 21st and the academic achievement committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you everyone and have a great evening.